Started. Good afternoon. I'm David Hope Jones. I'm the chief executive of the Scotland Malawi Partnership. And welcome to this co-hosted event with the SNP and our sister network, the Malawi Scotland Partnership, working with the National Planning Commission of Malawi. The purpose of this afternoon's meeting, I guess, is twofold. Firstly, to engage the commissioner. We're delighted to have the CEO with us in the work of the SNP and MASP and to provide them a little bit of information about the bilateral relationship. But crucially, the main purpose of today's event is to be able to give a space for the commission to be able to brief our members in both Scotland and Malawi on Vision 2063, another key government of Malawi areas of policy. I'm reliably told that today, the 25th of May, is Africa Day. And what better way to be spending Africa Day than to stop and listen to our colleagues and friends in Malawi about what are Malawi's priorities and how do we challenge ourselves in Scotland to ensure that we're working towards Malawi's priorities and not assuming those priorities, or even worse, working towards our own. It was 16 years ago that almost every country in the world signed up to the Paris Declaration of Aid Effectiveness in 2005. And the key tenet there was to ensure that donors and partners are working towards host countries' policies and priorities. And I think too often over those 16 years that that hasn't been the reality that's seen on the ground. And if anyone hasn't yet seen Baseflow's fantastic short animated video, which makes that powerful case of why it's so important to listen to and be led by Malawi's priorities, please do watch it. In fact, when we finish in an hour's time, we'll be able to watch that on this call. So if you haven't seen it yet, please do stay on in an hour's time if you can. I'm going to turn in a moment to my counterpart in Malawi, Stella, to talk a little bit about what MASP is, to brief the commission. And then we will turn to Dr. Thomas Montali, who is the CEO and Director General of the National Planning Commission to brief us for about 20 minutes on Vision 2063. And we're also really thrilled to have Mr. Jolim Banda, who's the Director of Planning at the Ministry of Economic Planning and Development, who will input from his ministries. And then we'll have about 20 or 25 minutes for open Q and A. And as I said, at the end, we'll finish the meeting at two o'clock UK time, three o'clock Malawian time. And there'll be a time to watch the video and have a more informal conversation for those who wish to. I'm keen also to thank the Stran leaders in the government of Malawi who have joined us in this call today, although not on the agenda, I expect they'll be a key part of our meeting. With regards to administration, we are recording today's meeting as we always do, so no state secrets. Please, we'll publish it afterwards in spirit of transparency and accountability. Please do use the chat box to introduce yourself, to have a discussion whether bilaterally, privately with another member of the meeting or openly. Please be aware, anything that you put openly in that meeting will be published afterwards on our webpage. And I think while our friends in Malawi are speaking, we'll turn cameras off just to ensure that we maximize the bandwidth to hear as much as we can. And I can reassure you that incredibly annoying bleep, bleep, bleep noise will go when I mute my microphone. The fault is on my computer. So my sincere apologies for that. But it will now go as I pass over to my friend and counterpart in Malawi, Stella Massangano, the Chief Executive of the Malawi Scotland Partnership, who briefed the commission for a few minutes on the work of the Malawi Scotland Partnership. Stella, over to you.
Thank you, David. May you please share the screen? Hello, hello, David?
Hi there. Yeah. And so if you click the share screen button at the bottom, the green button at the bottom.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Stella Massangano, as David has already said. Today, we gather to hear from National Planning Commission on what are the government priorities. But before we do that, let me quickly take you through this presentation on what MASP, Malawi Scotland Partnership is about, is all about. Malawi Scotland Partnership, as the name says, is about relationship between Malawi and Scotland. This partnership has existed way, all the way from the day Dr. David Livingstone touched his feet on the soils of Malawi. In short, it's called MASP. It's an umbrella organisation for links between Malawians and Scots. MASP exists to foster vibrant, diverse and productive links between Malawians and Scotland. In terms of membership, we have about 465 members across the country. Most of these are from the community groups, churches, schools, universities, NGOs and community civil society organisations. What are the objectives? Basically, MASP exists in order to provide advice, in order to promote links between Malawi and Scotland. We also facilitate the interaction between individuals and organisations. And also, more importantly, we exist to disseminate information as regards to international development, I mean, international development, good practices and expertise between Malawi and Scotland. Why and who joins Malawi Scotland Partnership? I've already indicated that we work with a diverse group of organisations, churches, business people. So if you are a member of MASP or Malawi Scotland Partnership, you can access information, you can be connected, you can get advice. We have Malawi Scotland Partnership here in Malawi and in Scotland, we have Scotland Malawi Partnership, of which David, my colleague, is the CEO. And at the back of it, we also have the governments, Malawi government and the Scottish government. As Malawi Scotland Partnership will continue to build capacity for our members, will continue to do advocacy work and also do resource mobilisation for our members. In short, we are a coordinating hub for organisations that have interest in both countries, in Malawi and Scotland. Furthermore, these are also the objectives. We connect, we inform, we advise, we support and we develop, as well as influence, as well as represent the partnership between the two countries. Recent, the Scottish government did develop new principles. Before, they also had principles, there were 11, but they developed new principles. So some of the principles are here. The first one is country-led partnership, among the other that are being deemed here. Today, we propose for this meeting to the Director General of National Planning Commission in order to brief our members specifically targeting principle number one, which is country-led partnership, that is, the Scottish government do recognise that for us to implement projects, the projects must be aligned to what that specific government is saying are priority. In this case, we recognise, the Scottish government recognise that Vision 2063 contains priorities. As such, we have called the Director General of the National Planning Commission to brief us, to brief our members, so they understand what are the priorities of the government of Malawi. Thank you. Let me ask my colleague David from Scotland Malawi Partnership to take over the floor.
Thanks so much, Stella. And if you just stop screen sharing, if that's okay, and I'll just quickly pop my slides up. Fantastic. Thanks so much, Stella. Just, I'll be really quick because I want to prioritise our time to be listening to our colleagues in Malawi. But Dr. Montali, for your benefit, a little bit on the Scotland Malawi Partnership, some quick numbers, if I may. These come from 2018, a University of Edinburgh study. £50 million worth of time, effort and energy and money comes from all of the civic links that Scotland has with Malawi. 109,000 Scots involved, almost double that in Malawi. And crucially, both sides benefit, just as both sides contribute. That's what makes it a partnership, a dignified partnership, rather than a charitable or philanthropic relationship. The, just pull out one number from this. It's a University of Glasgow study, 2018. Forty-six per cent of Scots that took part in that study randomly stopped on the street, could name a friend or family member with a connection to Malawi. So I'm really keen to emphasise this point. Malawi is known and loved throughout Scotland. And for almost half the country, when you say Malawi, eyes will light up and they'll talk about their kids' school link or their mum's church link. And that gives us a fantastic springboard to be able to do good through all of those partnerships working together. We are the sister network to MASP, as Stella said. We're made up, we've got around 1,200 members, made up of 140 NGOs, all the big names you would recognise and expect, but many more, much smaller, much more Scottish NGOs as well, 50 businesses, over 230 schools, pretty much all the universities in Scotland, some of them having upwards of 20 or 30 different connections to Malawi, 80 different community and faith-based groups, 16, that's half the Scottish local authorities are members, as well as 30 national or professional agencies. Everything from all the Royal Colleges to the Edinburgh Zoo, the RSE, RSPB, the Botanic Gardens, each have their own Malawi links and Malawi story. And we've also got 300 youth ambassadors and 300 community champions. So a formidable network in scale and impact. In normal times, what do we do? We're running regular forums. Those are obviously happening digitally at the moment. We provide information guidance and practical support. We have a weekly bulletin that goes out. Youth and schools are the very centre of what we do as a network. And I'm really proud that in my 13 years in this job, the average age of engagement has got younger and not older. And that's very much the future of the bilateral relationship from our perspective. And we're active on media and comms and advocacy work as well, although really, it's the civic component that's our mainstay. Obviously, through COVID, over the last 14 months, supporting COVID coordination has been at the centre of what we've been doing. Stepping up to the President of Malawi's three challenges for the bilateral relationship, to grow it to half a million people involved, to have a high-level return conference within five years, again, to listen to those Malawian priorities and to use COP26, which is happening in Glasgow in November, to inspire a next generation of climate activists. We also have some work around governance strengthening. We're supporting what is becoming the Malawi UK Chamber of Commerce. We've just had our digital youth festival, which reached over a quarter of a million people. Our podcast, People-to-People podcast, is available for anyone to listen to. And race inequality work and following the Black Lives Matter movement is at the centre of what we're doing. I've probably rushed through that as quickly as I possibly can. But Dr. Montali, very happy to answer any questions now or afterwards. But I really want to prioritise our time to listen to yourself. So with no further ado, I wonder if I could pass over to Dr. Thomas Montali, who are incredibly lucky to have his time here today. He's the Director General of the National Planning Commission and the CEO of the organisation as well. And this is an incredibly important time for us to stop and listen to Malawi. So Dr. Montali, over to you. The floor is yours for around 15 to 20 minutes or so.
Right. Thank you so much, David. And indeed, all the colleagues that are connected here. Stella, my sister, who is heading the Malawi Scotland Partnership this side, quite exciting. Let me share my screen. So I hope you can see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Yes, okay. So first, I think I think the discussion will be really around the Malawi 2063 vision for the country, which does reflect the aspirations of Malawians and therefore the forecast in terms of what would determine the interventions that the government and indeed partners need to be supporting moving forward. Just to point out that we would want to, as a commission and the country, be more focused on positive thinking moving forward, because we believe that there is quite a lot of wealth in this country, to not be focusing on the negatives around the poverty of its people, the challenges that have been rocking us over the years. While we appreciate that those are aspects that we need to learn from, our focus is on looking at the positive side, that we can do it. And we've got no choice as a country but to do it moving forward. Now, we, I'm going to look at just first, in the reflection of what the the team might have asked to listen to. So the mandate of the commission and the whole process of coming up with a new vision. And then the role that the United States actors, like those that are working with the Scotland Malawi Partnership, should be aware of as we implement the vision together. Let me start by this reflection, by our very first president, we cannot give excuses. We must simply develop this country. Apparently, I may misunderstand, but Kamis Banda also used to be a church elder in the Church of Scotland. So we, as David said, there's a lot of commonality between the two countries. But I think the bottom line is be part of developing this country, because we cannot in any way give excuses. Why did the National Planning Commission come into being? Too many elements. When the commission came into being through an act of parliament in 2017, the challenge was that there was discontinuities in development programmes. Because every time a new government comes in office, then they would introduce their own development agendas. And so you would go three steps backwards and then five steps backwards, because others would say, look, the colleagues started this, we need to start our own stuff. So the coming in of the National Planning Commission was to create a perimeter below, to make sure that it does two things. First is to plan long-term and medium-term as well, to make sure that the planning does not just look at short-term political timeframes. And the link to the medium and long-term planning was to oversee implementation of the plans that have been developed. The idea being that there should be continuity of those development programmes. And so there had to be a law that an institution does facilitate coordination of that and overseeing that that really is happening on the ground. So the commission becomes that powerful independent public board that has the mandate to do these two key things. Now, in this year, we, as a country, launched our new vision. And this is what we're calling Malawi 2063. By the way, this is not agenda to this, which is the one for the African Union, but ours is Malawi 2063. And the vision is simple. We want to be an inclusively wealthy and safely launched nation come 2063 or much earlier. Why? Because we really want to fund our development needs primarily by ourselves. So when we can rely on the goodwill of countries like Scotland, we would want to make sure that the basic needs of the country are not funded by the goodwill of others. And when we are creating the wealth, it should be wealth that translates into inclusive wealth creation and not just benefiting the few, as it seems to be largely the case at the moment. So that is what motivated Malawians a lot, because when we went around asking Malawians, both in and outside the country, the diaspora, that kept on ringing, that our vision. Now, this vision for us to achieve, how do we create the wealth and be safely launched? Three pillars. First, we've got to focus on agricultural productivity and commercialisation. Two, we've got to industrialise more. And in industrialising, we want to make sure that mining is part of the agenda of industrialising for this country. In other ways, we'll be asking ourselves the question, mining for what? And lastly, is urbanisation, because we realise that a lot of our people are deprived of socio-economic amenities that are available in the cities, which are basically for at the moment, Blanty, Gombe Zozo and Zomba. And so we want to take the development to the people through creation of secondary cities. And those cities that already exist, I want to make sure that they transform into proper green cities, cities that are also taken to account the needs of the future, reduce the slamming that is happening. So in other ways, we're trying to come up with a planned urbanisation across the country. And in planning that, we want to make sure that our ecotourism centres become some kind of small towns, therefore becoming to urbanise, that the people around those tourism centres are also benefiting with high level socio-economic activities, amenities, to improve the quality of life of home allowance. But for us to create this wealth inclusive and be safely launched and focusing on these three pillars, there will be a need for certain enablers to be in place so that they can facilitate this process. And these seven enablers are mindset change, we need to have effective governance systems and institutions, we need to have enhanced public sector performance, there has to be very dynamic private sector, human capital development will be very key, that's including economic infrastructure, ICT, transport energy, and lastly, environmental sustainability. This, as you have seen, are working in an ecosystem. None is standalone. They've got to support each other for us to be able to meet the vision that we're talking about. Now, as I mentioned, this vision process was very conservative. All segments of society, members of parliament and everybody else. And that's why it has received a lot of acceptance. And if you read the vision itself, there are statements in there by various segments, the youth, the members of parliament, the chiefs, the development partners, every category of society had its say in terms of what commitment are they making for the Malawians themselves, what we're seeing in 2063. How do we want to make sure that this is different from Vision 2020, which is a succeeding? We have learnt lessons, some of which being, we've put now in Malawi 2063 guiding, implementation guiding principles, some of which, for example, include that we do not want to start our development programmes, we are not assured that we have the resources to complete those development programmes, or at least if we are not assured of the committed resources to complete those development programmes. Because what has been happening so far has been a plethora of throwing bits and pieces of resources here and there, spreading resources thinly, and in the process, nothing to show for all the development support that we've got in as a country. At the same time, we only want to focus on few impactful transformative initiatives that can begin to move us in the direction of graduating into middle-income economy by 2030 and meeting most of the SDGs moving forward. So you would realise that, as I said, is when you begin to spread these resources. And so when we are asking development partners to support us, we want to be asking, is this really going to be transformative? Are you not going to be asking, are these people not going to be coming back to you for support year in, year out? We do not want to have our communities and people stuck in survival economics, where every year the Scottish have to come and support them, but they shouldn't be graduating. So transformative support is what we'll be looking forward to more. That's why, as a commission, we'll be in a moment, I'll be talking about putting together what we call pillar and enabler coordination groups, that will prioritise what interventions go in each pillar and enabler and review together in terms of what is really transforming people's lives and therefore promoting their scale up. Those that don't have to be dropped, because the resources are scarce and at the same time, we have to be efficient. In Vision 2020, we didn't have milestones. You'd actually be surprised that since Vision 2020 came into being in 1998, it has never been reviewed until last year, the last of last year, when we decided to take lessons before we started crafting the new vision, which was a shame, because we needed to be able to review regularly to see, are we making progress or not? Our national budgets, our medium-term development programmes are hardly linked to the Vision 2020. So there was a big disconnect and which is what we want to correct this time around. At the same time, we are planning for a proper financing mechanism, and I'll talk about it in a moment, including the capacities that are required to implement the vision and its medium-term development plans, especially at the decentralised levels in the districts, where a lot of the capacity is close to zero. And as a country, we need to be capacitating these institutions, where decentralisation is not just on paper, but it's decentralisation both in terms of the devolution of the powers and resources to support that. And that's one of the correcting, one of the things need to correct as lessons that we've learnt from the past. We have also made a determination, there's a amendment at the moment, that the political party, under the Political Parties Act, all manifestos moving forward have to be aligned to the Malawi 2063, so that no political party comes with its own agenda. So when we're voting political parties in office, we all know that they are all aligned, so that they are emphasising on one aspect or another within the vision. And at what quicker speed are they suggesting that they'll do the things that the masses telling them, this is what your vision says? We've got the vision translated in summary in local language. And the idea is that they should be able to know, this is our vision, if the political party comes to them, they should be able to ask, so how does the manifesto talk to our aspirations? That way, we'll ensure that there's continuity in development programmes, building on what the people want as we move towards 2063. We've got a development philosophy that is underpinning the new vision and that is having an inclusive democratic developmental state pinned on three aspects. First, visionary and development-oriented leadership. Two, a competent state bureaucracy, which is, which has to be seen autonomous. A strong public-private alliance. Now, one of the key aspects that we are promoting, I know sometimes the British don't and the Scottish may not like that, is an active role of the state. But while forging strong alliance as to the private sector, the area of investing in Malawi, because the bureaucracy is huge, utilities are not existent in some areas. So when you partner with the local, with the government entities, they should help to kick-start investments in that particular strategic area. But they should never stay there, because it's not their business to stay into conducting private business. But they need to carry through, once these private entities are making profits, they pull out and sell their shares to local Malawians to create a cadre of middle-income, middle-class Malawians. So you might be seeing soon some trailblazing institutions. Those of you who are old enough, who remember the Malawi Development Corporation, that used to partner with private sector entities and they would have themes in tourism, in mining, in all the sectors, agriculture and so on, but under the government-state principles, but in private sector principles, with strong alliance in terms of management being done by the private sector itself. Now, finally, what are we looking at as the role of the United States actors in the implementation of the vision? This is a collective responsibility. And we look at United States actors like the ones that are working under the Scotland Malawi or Malawi Scotland Partnership, to help in the pillars and enablers. I have to emphasise that the Malawi 2063 is going to be operationalised by 10-year implementation plans. At the moment, we've already started, we've already put together the first Malawi 10-year implementation plan, which is now undergoing final approvals through the authorities in terms of the cabinet. In there, what we've done is to look at two key milestones. First is to have Malawi income economy come 2030. Second is to make sure that we meet as many of the SDGs as possible, because you remember, this is the last decade of action for the SDGs. Now, for us to be able to graduate to middle-income economy, we'll have to have a lot more focus on creating the means for creating wealth. In other ways, while the social sectors will remain an important aspect for human capital development, we'll have a lot more focus on the economic sectors, because we want to make sure that we're able to create the wealth that can help us sustainably support the social sectors. So that balancing act, we'll be seeing it in the 10-year implementation plan. But the United States actors, we do hope that they can support us a lot more in building the human capacity, in terms of health and education, in building the economic infrastructure. And we are able to move in the direction that we have to move without being a lady a back. For example, if we don't address the issues of corruption For example, if we don't address the issues of corruption in this country, it means we can be creating the wealth, but that wealth will be going in holes, will be going in a bottomless pit. So we need to close off those holes so that when we're creating the wealth, it's sitting in a port that we can use to grow our human capital and support all the other areas that we need as a country. The same with environmental sustainability. We need the support of the United States actors. The bottom line, as I want to emphasise again, is that whatever programmes we are putting together, they should be transformative. They should never leave Malawians wanting to get the same things year in, year out. We should be looking at how are they graduating to safe reliance, both at the household, community and national level. And the first three years in line with the vision of the current government, we want to make sure that we first focus on wealth and job creation and food security. How that is going to be done is a preserve of what we're defining in the Malawi, in the 10-year implementation plan. And the United States actors are a key in partnering with government in making sure that we drive in the same direction. Lastly, as I said, that we have those pillar and enabler coordination groups. I would really make a call to the partners that are working under the Scotland-Malawi partnership, that they are actively engaged, especially through the umbrella bodies in the pillar and enabler coordination group, so that together we can be prioritising interventions and be reviewing those interventions. Because if you're not part of that system, you are likely to be missed out. And we want to make sure that those partners also practice that the NGO board does request for reports in terms of where they are making interventions, how much money they're spending in country. Because at the end of the day, what we really want is not about tracking each other for anything or the suspicion, but that there should be utilisation of the resources in the utmost way, avoid duplication of efforts so that at the same time, we can be as effective and efficient building on our competitive advantages to deliver best on this safe reliance and inclusive wealth creation agenda that the country has embarked on. My last reflection, David and Tim. So the African proverb says, more precious than our children are the children of our children. We, as a country, may have failed, but get it from me, some of us are now determined that our children should never be failed. We've got to do all it takes to make sure that our children forever can walk tall in Edinburgh and in all those cities in Scotland and every part of the world. So be part as Scotland-Malawi partnership of the biggest and history. I think let me stop there. Suffice to mention, but should you want to get the Malawi 2063 vision, you can go on our website, which is there, www.npc.mw. You can download the vision. Or if you've got any issues about the Malawi development agenda or the commission itself, you can write directly to me, I've actually deliberately put my very own email address so that we can interface a lot more. We appreciate the collaboration that Malawi has with Scotland and we do believe that this is an exciting moment for us to even take it to a higher level. Thanks so much for your attention.
Fantastic. Dr Mantali, thank you very much indeed for an informative, inspiring and rallying call for everyone to work within and towards a vision 2063. I'm delighted to have another key Malawian speaker with us, Mr Jolim Banda, who is the Director of Planning in the Ministry of Economic Planning and Development. I'll hand over to you in a second, but just before I do, Craig, if you could put a link in the chat box to the Vision 2063. And friends, while we listen to Mr Banda, please do be thinking of questions that you have for Dr Mantali and Mr Banda to start the discussions, which will have immediately afterwards. But over to you, Mr Banda, if you're on the line, Mr Jolim Banda.
Thank you very much, David. And thank you very much, Dr Mantali, Stella Masangano and all others. Firstly, let me, on behalf of the government and people of Malawi, appreciate and cherish the good relationship between Malawi and Scotland. We thank the government and the people of Scotland for the support lent to the government and the people of Malawi through different means, including through civil society collaborations. Where I come from here in Lillongwe, in our community, we've enjoyed between us and the Scottish and we have got a very fond memories, fond memories of Josephine Britton from St Kans Mauden Savok. We really greatly appreciate. The government of Malawi is looking forward to the growth day by day of this relationship between Malawi and Scotland. And we would like to, the Malawi-Scotland relationship and the link between civil society organisations across Malawi and Scotland continue to flourish. Thank you very much.
Mr Banda, thank you very much for your input from the government of Malawi, most appreciated. Thank you for your fine words and appreciation and absolutely likewise. The relationship has enjoyed 162 years and I have no doubt it will enjoy another 162. Thanks to the commitment, input and support of countless individuals, yourself included. And I'm keen that we use the remainder of our time for an open Q and A. And so I'm going to start pulling out some of the questions in the chat box. Please do write your question and I will call on you. I see there's a question from Malawi Heritage. I'm afraid I don't know the name behind that account, but a question relating to engagement of the diaspora. Malawi Heritage, if you're there and would like to jump in to voice your question.
Yeah, thank you very much, David. It's Alan Mandinde here. And thank you for, you know, everyone, the representative of the government of Malawi. Yeah, on behalf of the Malawi Heritage UK, I've got a question here which just concerns the Malawians that are living here in the United Kingdom. And as we continue to see the rise of numbers of Malawians who are now living here in the UK permanently and including those that are born here in the UK. Now, the question to the commission is, what measures do we have in place to make sure that, you know, as we are moving ahead with the 2063 agenda, the Malawi we want, we are also, you know, more inclusive. You know, and bear in mind that the young ones, the Malawians who are living here, who are born here, you know, we are also considering them as investors or future developmental partners. So I just want to ask, you know, what measures do we have in place to make sure that, you know, we don't leave them behind? We are moving together as we are going, we are, you know, incorporating the diaspora. Yeah.
If you're happy to take that question, Dr Mantali, if you're there, a question on how the Malawi diaspora is engaged.
Right, right, that's, that's fine. I was hoping that maybe there will be other few questions, but I can take that immediately. That was from David, I think. No, no, not David. Who was the person?
It's Alan Mandinde.
Alan, yes, yes, Alan. No, Alan, a very good question. We just last month had a very good interface with the diaspora colleagues in the UK. And I wish we were part of that. Actually, there is a package of incentives that we are promoting along with the central bank here in terms of how we can get the diaspora to effectively contribute, more especially in three elements. It's one, we're looking at skills. I have, actually, most of you are there because the various countries you are in are having to use you for various expertise. So tapping on you, even before you come here, where you sit, we can always use you to support the country in its development agenda. And that's one area. And we are hoping that through the diaspora desk that has been set through the Ministry of Foreign Affairs, we can be able to tap on your expertise by creating a database of the skill sets that are existing in the diaspora. Secondly, it's the issue of you contributing to the development through financing. We are putting together diaspora bonds, especially in the infrastructure area. Like for instance, at the moment, we're looking at tour roads and the creating of energy plants. This is something that we are working with the Minister of Finance, the ideas that you guys in diaspora have to support and in the process make profits for yourselves over time. So one of the issues that we've taken up with foreign affairs as well is to promote and facilitate the geo citizenship. The president has been engaged and he's keen to make sure that this is fast tracked so that the geo citizenship is facilitated for some. We are scared that they may not benefit as much if they cannot be allowed to have this geo citizenship. So trust you me, Alan, that there is quite a lot that is being worked in the background to make sure that people in the diaspora are part and parcel of the vision. Because in any case, when we are doing the consultations, people in the diaspora, we are also consulted through representation, through the representation of the diaspora desk that we had, members across. So thanks so much and this is it.
Fantastic. Thank you, Dr Mantali. I'll take, we'll try and get to as many questions as we can. We'll do them in pairs. I'd like to call first January Mahula and then Benjamin Carey. If each of you could voice your question in turn, if you keep your question to two sentences, please. Over to you, January.
Thank you. Let me commend the presenter for a nice presentation and for a good planning. Of course, my worry is looking at climate change versus planning. I can see many people cutting more trees in Malawi. And I would like to hear from the director himself to, I think, to enlighten us what is happening because as CSW's, we want to see this thing changing. And what are his plan to make sure that the relevant sectors are informed to make sure that we are protecting our duty forest as well as stopping climate change which is caused by this. Thank you.
Thank you, January. And Benjamin, in one or two sentences, if you're happy to voice your question.
Thank you. I put a long question in the chat box, but I've been talking to a number of people in Malawi, including the Ministry of Tourism. And one of the things that I'm puzzled by, I think the Malawi 2063 is a brilliant document. But there seems to be an assumption that there will be youth drift to urban centres and the development of tourism seems to be very much looking at urban tourism development. And to my mind, there seems to be a particular opportunity for community-led heritage tourism in rural areas, which could be very much guided by youth community organisations. And I'm just wondering whether the chief executive feels that urbanisation really is unavoidable or whether there is a lot more community development work can be done, particularly with youth in rural areas involving tourism.
Thank you, Benjamin. Dr Mantali, over to you.
Right. No, thanks so much, January 1st. You're right, the issues of environment are very key for the country. And I think what I can say is that the United States actors that are keen to support the environmental sustainability enabler are most welcome. What would be very important is for you to remain engaged in terms of the plans and the interventions that have been festing implementation plan, which should be, all other factors constant, by end of next month, we should have them approved by cabinet and then launched. That will act as a guide on the specifics of what we are trying to prioritise in that particular area. But at the same time, the pillar and enabler coordination groups generally will be key for United States actors to get engaged in because those will be helping to prioritise what interventions they would be in environmental sustainability and also reviewing so that we can be able to scale up those that are really transforming our environment over time. Coming back to the point, to the question by Benjamin, I think you're right. The point that we're trying to promote under urbanisation is that, and you're also correct, that whether you like it or not, over time, there will be urbanisation taking place. But we need to begin to have planned urbanisation. It's either you decide to have urbanisation taking place, leaving it to default when it's on, or you have to make the choice to sell this planet. So one of the things that really want to emphasise under creating of tourism hubs is to identify areas that can have planned tourism centres. The idea is that when you are looking at tourism centres, even when you look at ecotourism, the communities around there should not feel deprived and just seeing tourism coming to those places, making money and going. But they should also be able to benefit with very good socio-economic communities around those areas so that they transform in some very good towns where tourists are forming hubs. So basically, that's the point around the urbanisation. Actually, we're trying to rebrand our tourism. We admittedly want to promote that, you know, no plastics, no national parks and stuff like that. So that if people are coming, if there's any one place in Africa, in southern African region that they can see green tourism, then they should be coming to us.
Fantastic. Thank you very much indeed. And I'll take another two questions. The first I'll read out, the second will be from Yona and I'll pass to you in a second, Yona, to ask your question. The first from Mark O'Donnell, he asks, what is the government doing to regulate PPPs? And that's public-private partnerships, I presume, that will be involved in developing the long-term vision. And Yona, in a sentence or two, if you're happy to read out your question.
Thank you. My question is on what are the immediate national plans, immediate? I know, Dr Mantali, you've talked about the 10-year and we understand what you say about the 2063. Given the problems that Malawi has, what are the immediate? And let me guess, I had two things. I'm surprised and I'm happy to hear you talked about the geo citizenship and also that there's some kind of discussion in the diaspora. I haven't heard of any of this. And I thought that the geo citizenship was already done in the previous government. Thank you.
Dr Mantali, if you're happy to come back to those two questions on regulation of PPPs and Yona's question about the near term.
Right. No, thank you so much. Once again, was that Yona that asked the question?
Yes.
That's right, yeah.
Right. Right. So I think Yona, you're spot on. I think the PPPs.
No, that was not mine, sorry.
That was not just yours, was the geo citizenship?
Yes, but before that, my question was, what are the immediate plans? We, Malawi is a disaster. We need something done now and what are those?
You're frozen. You are frozen when you were speaking. I didn't hear.
Sorry, let me repeat. So Yona's main question was, what is the immediate plans, the near term, the next few years? What are the near term plans and priorities?
Right. Okay, fine. So let me start with the last one, which is an easier one. The geo citizenship had the processes had started off, but it had not been finalised in terms of creating that, that could now be the act or the bill passed into parliament to have that formalised. So I think it's just undergoing final stages. And once that is assented to, then that should be something that the diaspora can begin to enjoy. But it's something that should be coming out very soon from what I get from the Ministry of Foreign Affairs and from the president himself, who was engaging the diasporans from Canada last week. Now, here is the, there's no like immediate plan in this particular specific area. You will remember that I've talked about three key pillars. There's the area of agricultural productivity, commercialisation. There's industrialisation that includes mining and tourism. What we've done in each of them, we've decided on what we call game changers and quick wins. The point being that there are certain things we're not defining game changers that have to really happen if we have to see things happening differently in changing the landscape of the development discourse of the country, especially those particular areas. And the quick wins are things that we can already plug. So for example, one of the things that we're promoting big time moving forward is mining. At the moment, we are busy in terms of identifying few mining sites that we think we can begin to work on first. Because the levels that we are faced with has one, it don't want a track cycle. We need to diversify the economy. And if we can begin off with a few impactful mineral sites, that we can facilitate the private sector to engage in. Then we are moving into some direction that will take us closer to the graduation to middle income economy. So whatever interventions we are looking at, Yona, is that we're asking ourselves, will this really take us to the middle income status by 2050? Whether it's about developing the human capital, it's the human capital that we think it will help to facilitate in the shortest time possible to get us there. And the same principle that I just mentioned earlier on, or focusing on few impactful development projects, whether seen in roads or power. One of the things that we emphasise a lot more is power. Mining is failing because we don't have adequate power. So an important economic infrastructure that comes very strongly is power itself. In the general discourse of things, there's ICT that we want to emphasise on because of the challenges, both in terms of e-commerce, e-learning, e-health, tourism and stuff like that. So depending on the pillar, whether talking of urbanisation and the industrialisation or commercialisation, there's some game changes. When the 10-year implementation plan is finally out next month, I think we'll be happy to share with you to appreciate what are the immediate things that we are looking at. Because what we've done is that in the 10-year plan, we've isolated quick wins for the first five years. And therefore, those are the ones that you see as what are going to be priorities for us in the immediate.
Thank you. And there was just briefly on the regulation.
Perhaps there was a question on PPPs.
PPPs, that's right.
Yes. So we have, on the regulation of PPPs, we have a body in Malawi, the Public Private Partnership Commission. That is the, given the mandate, to regulate PPPs. And what we've, what we've seen lately is that the PPC has engaged an extra gear in terms of making sure that some of the interventions that we have should go through local bonds in terms of the infrastructure network, infrastructure investments, with the idea of making sure that they go through PPP. And they've trained a number of ministries, department and agencies on how to develop bankable investment projects that can undergo PPPs. So that they appreciate the concept of PPPs and the, and the regulation itself will be happening through them as the Public Private Partnership Commission.
Fantastic. Thank you very much, Dr. Matali. I'm going to take two final questions, but please do, in the closing minutes of this meeting, write down your questions into the chat box. Because, Dr. Matali, at the risk of being cheeky, we can email you across the written questions. And if you're able to give written answers, we can get that by email to everyone. So if you put something in the chat box, we will endeavour to get a written, if not a spoken, answer. But my two final questioners, I'd like to be Malawi Anguera and Tracy Morse. And both, if you could keep your question to just one sentence or two maximum. Over to you first, Malawi Anguera.
Thank you very much, David. My question is on the economic infrastructure, whereby Dr. Matali had indicated that they are quite keen for non-state actors to get involved in this. Given what is happening with the energy sector whereby IPPs are allowed, is the thinking that, for instance, in the other infrastructure sectors, say roads, ports, airports, is the thinking that the private sector can also engage here without going through the PPP route?
Thank you, Dr. Anguera. Final question spoken from Tracy Morse. Dr. Morse.
Hi, thanks, David. I'll make it very quick. I just wonder if Dr. Matali could talk a little bit more about what he sees as the role of higher education partnerships and meeting some of the targets and visions within Vision 2063. Thanks.
Thanks, Tracy. Dr. Matali, over to you.
Very important questions. Dr. Anguera, you see, you can go into supporting the infrastructure projects without having to go through PPPs. For example, in the energy sector, now we have, you might know that we disbanded Escom. So there is Escom, that is the distributor and transmitter, Ejenco, and any private players that want to come in. And we have a marketing, a market, a power market buyer, a market company, a power buying company that takes off from independent power producers. So it's not necessarily that all the time you have to have these PPPs. You can, using, if you've got the ability to breed on your own, that's fine and good. We are only saying that sometimes it's far much easier, given the resource and technological constraints that one institution might have to come into PPPs. But you're most welcome to come in, especially in the renewable energy kind of area. That's one part that would really be encouraging and welcome. If there's anything that we can do to facilitate that, I would be very happy as a commission to help in partnership with the Ministry of Economic Plan. Now, on higher education partnerships, Tracy, that's most, most welcome. Because actually, as non-state actors, we think that you've got competitive advantages, especially in these areas of education and health. And therefore, we would welcome a lot more for you to be part of the support in that area and be actively engaged in the pillar and enabler coordination groups, where you can be able to define the priorities that Malawi needs in the education sector, along with reviewing for scaling up what you think are really key aspects. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much, Dr. Matali. And we've reached the end of our time. And so I'll perhaps just say a few closing remarks for me and then I'll turn to my counterpart Stella's co-chaired meeting. So over to Stella to share her final remarks. And I suppose that the main thing I wanted to say, you know, sitting here in Scotland, is just how impressed I am with everything that we've heard today. You know, here is a country shaping its vision and future, not in the short or medium term, but in the extreme long term. I think there's five main things I think Scotland can learn from Malawi and I'm keen that we do. Firstly, how consultative this process has been. Secondly, that point of just how long-term a vision this is, that you're able to, Malawi's able to stand up and get outside those usual five-year political timescales that we find it so hard to do. Thirdly, this focus on inclusive development, I think, is something that definitely Scotland and the UK can learn from. Fourth, I'm really impressed at the commitment Dr. Matali's shown to learn from the previous long-term vision, from Vision 2020. And I think he's been quite open today about sort of the challenges with that process and drawing out the learning. And fifth, that commitment to regular reviews and tangible deliverables in the 10 and then five-year timescale and not just the sort of super long term. There are at least half a dozen things I think we can clearly work together on. The eco tourism centres and Benjamin's talked to that. The governance work, I think there's clear potential there for collaboration with Scotland. The human capital development, particularly in health and education, as Dr. Matali has said, and building the economic infrastructure, work on environmental sustainability and diaspora engagement. Those Malawians based here in Scotland and across the UK. As far as what we will do next, the Scotland-Malawi partnership, we will continue to look to disseminate, raise awareness of and build support for Vision 2063. Crucially, next month, the 10-year implementation plan. I think that's the really critical detail. So that's when we'll step things up. We'd like to accept your kind invitation, Dr. Matali, to be a part of the pillar and enabler coordination groups. And from there, help our members to appropriately feed in in proportionate and effective ways. And finally, to really engage and support members to take this on and to be able to challenge members, to tell them, what are they doing with Malawi? And how does that fit within Vision 2063? So those are some of the early ideas that we're taking away. But I very much see this as the beginning of a conversation and not the end. I'm keen to turn to my counterpart in Malawi, Stella, for MASPS, MASPS closing reflections. Over to you.
Thank you, David. Indeed, this is the beginning of a discussion that can huge meaningful development in this country. A few things that we need, that have been picked from this meeting. I think as members of the Malawi Scottish Partnership, we need to focus on transformative actions so that we are self-reliant and work towards creation of wealth. Yes, it's collective responsibility. We are all responsible. We should not only look at government to say it's the responsibility of the government. Are there issues of corruption that Director General has mentioned? What is it that we as members of MASPS can we do in order to make sure that whatever is being generated should not go into pockets of a few individuals? Do we come up with, do we influence the government maybe to mainstream corruption in the education sector? So that at a tender age, children should know what corruption is, they should know what to do and what not to do. Furthermore to that, I'm also impressed with the issue of tourism. That is also an area that is, that is, we need to look at. Then planned urbanisation, there is also an area of dynamic private sector. That is, we need the private sector that is vibrant. How can we, us as members of Malawi Scottish Partnership, who will bring in private companies from Scotland that can work alongside with Malawians to deliver or to implement projects that will generate profits for implementing of activities in this country? We need, I think, the Director General has ignited a debate for us to think beyond receiving age, to think beyond implementing projects that are not generating income. We need to think income generation. How can we as Malawians engage ourselves in mining? How as Malawians ensure that we are not damaging the environment? At this juncture, I think, let me thank the Director General from National Planning Commission as well as all government officials that are here to be part of this meeting. We are grateful and we are looking forward that you be with us all the times when we have discussions of this nature. And also, we are going to engage to see how far we can go with implementing the Vision 2063. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Stella. Absolutely. And I think two words will stay with me from this meeting, transformational change. And that's what we all want to step up to and be reminded of is Africa Day. And next steps, we will, within the next 24 hours, hopefully be able to send you written answers to those questions. Dr. Matali will send that across to you in the next 20 minutes. And when you're able, if you're able to send those answers, we'll disseminate that to everyone. As I've said in the chat box, if you didn't book a place through Eventbrite to attend today, please do email my colleague Craig. His address is in the chat box, your email address, to ensure that you get those emails following up from it. I'd like to thank our partners, the Malawi-Scotland partnership, but especially our main speakers, Dr. Matali, the Director General and Mr. Jolim Banda. We hugely appreciate your time. Craig, if you could put up the poll, two very quick questions for everyone to answer. It's hugely useful for us to be able to get your feedback. And so please do complete those. And while you do, three very quick plugs. The first is a brilliant meeting happening tomorrow, Wednesday, the 26th of May. 1pm UK time, 2pm Malawi time, we're meeting with the Parliamentary Under-Secretary of State for Scotland. You can join if you're an Edinburgh in person or you can join digitally from Malawi or wherever you are. Second awesome thing coming up, our chichewa classes, if you want to learn chichewa. If you're inspired by today's meeting, please do sign up. Full details on our website. And finally, our fantastic People2People podcast. I think we're launching episode four this week. If you haven't heard, please do listen. You'll find it on our website. It's absolutely brilliant. There are going to be 10 45-minute episodes, really digging down into what does the Scotland-Malawi relationship mean? It's really worth a listen. Thanks so much, everyone, for your time. And what we're going to do now, as we often do, is we're going to say goodbye. And those who want to can go, that's full expectation that people go there. No problem at all if you don't want to stick around. But Craig will play this brilliant seven-minute animated video. We can't take any credit. It's from a MAS member, Baseflow, who Muti was the driving force behind it. But it really gives a sense of why we feel it's so important to follow Malawi's priorities. So I'll say goodbye at this point, chance to say goodbye if you want to. But if you want to stick around, we'll watch the video and time for an informal chat. If anyone wants a wee chat, you're most welcome. Thanks very much, everyone.
Thanks, David. Thanks, Taylor. Less men engaged. Thanks again.
Absolutely. Thank you. So Craig, if you're happy to play the video.
Once upon a time, there were two cities separated by mountains and hills and rivers. A construction company was hired to build a train track between those two cities to reduce travel time. The engineers decided it would be a good idea to start the train track from either end and meet in the middle. Great idea, everyone agreed. And away they went, blasting every mountain in their way to get the train tracks laid. They were making great progress and were very pleased with themselves. But when they finally met in the middle, they realised they had a problem. The train tracks didn't align. Someone had to be blamed for this. But who? The engineers started pointing fingers at each other, blaming each other for bad communication, poor consultation and lack of collaboration between the teams. But unknown to them, the real problem was coordination, defined as the act of arranging, putting things in order and making things run smoothly together. Arranging, putting things in order, running smoothly, how hard can that be? Well, coordination is not as easy as it sounds. And poor coordination is far more common than you might think. Nobody knows that better than NGOs. Let me explain. You see, it's no surprise Malawi has a great many social problems. No matter what sector you look at, from energy to food to water, you name it. Every sector has major problems. And it's often the role of government to deal with these social problems. But the government is generally under-capacitated, overstretched and underfunded to provide these social services. This is why NGOs are extremely crucial to social services. Because they fill a gap the government wouldn't be able to fill. So NGOs very often work very closely with government, supporting national plans and priorities. So social services are better and end up benefiting everyone, everywhere, forever. Wouldn't that be amazing if that were true? The truth is, very often, none of this happens. NGOs usually work on their own, bypassing government and implementing donor interests rather than supporting government priorities, all in the name of helping the poor. And because there are so many NGOs working in Malawi, it is sadly commonplace that two NGOs can work in the same village, doing the same activities, targeting the same people, but with different pots of money. And the government won't even know it's happening. This is why in the water sector, for example, it is not uncommon for one village to have more water points than they actually need, while another village has none at all. This leads to a waste and misallocation of resources. The same things NGOs often accuse government of doing. Whenever such NGOs are taken to task about such a situation, each NGO blames the other NGO for not coordinating better with that NGO. Kind of like the engineers we all know about. But can the government do something? Well, besides being cash-strapped and undercapacitated, government usually talks a lot, but does very little. Usually because they're afraid to lose that much-needed NGO money that comes into the district. So basically, government may have the mandate, but it has no power. While NGOs have the power, but no mandate. Okay, then can these NGOs just talk to each other, you might ask? But that's the thing. NGOs have networks, forums, workshops, symposia, meetings and conferences year in and year out, where they do nothing but talk, sometimes about coordination. So the problem isn't that NGOs aren't talking to each other. Talking is what NGOs are good at. And it's not that NGOs don't know about the benefits of good coordination. They just don't want to coordinate unless donors demand it. So poor coordination among NGOs leads to waste and a misallocation of resources. But it just doesn't end there. The problem of waste created by NGOs falls right back in the laps of government. The same government that didn't create the problem, but we all expect them to solve it. And when the government fails to solve this problem, everyone blames them for not doing their job. Even the very same NGOs that created those problems, usually with more donor funding. Now, the government should be blamed for certain things. But is it fair to blame them for problems created by NGOs? And in the end, Malawi's social problems never get solved and things never change. But some things got to change. But where do we start? Here are a few ideas. Government. Stop being a toothless bulldog and start bringing more sanity to the social sector. If you continue leaving NGOs to their own devices because you're afraid of losing NGO money, NGOs will continue to create new problems you will not have the budget or the capacity to solve. Donors. You wield a lot of power. Encourage coordination within all your funded projects and ensure your projects are aligned with government priorities. And also, support coordination efforts of network organizations like Westnet in the water sector. So they can do a better job of reining in NGOs in their networks. NGOs. Support government systems, even when it's frustrating to do so. Working with government can be hard, but always remember, government will be here long after you're gone. Or we could just keep doing what we've been doing for years, hope for a different result and blame each other when the result remains the same. But let's remember, no amount of blaming will ever connect the train tracks.
Thanks very much. Great, really powerful video. And I'm really pleased that Muti is actually with us on the on the call. I'm keen, rather than speak for him, Muti, did you want to say a little bit about sort of what motivated you to make the make the video and what you what you hope will happen as a result of making that really powerful and I think spot on video? Muti, over to you.
Thank you, David. I think if you could just enable me to just share one photograph, which actually inspired me to do this video so people understand where I'm coming from. For for the for most part, I think most people think I'm I'm not, I actually I actually have an NGO, I'm running an NGO. And it's because of years of seeing, I hope you can see what I'm about to share. It's because of years of things like this. Those of you who can see very clearly, these are two boreholes within the same locality that didn't need to be there. And and this is extremely common, more common than you might think. And despite talking at meetings, I've attended coordinating coordination workshops of all kinds at district, national levels, and yet I still see this come out. So the video was inspired by images like this one. And I'm hoping that the more people see it, the more people will see that this is a conversation that I think as the aid industry, we need to seriously be having in terms of what does this actually mean in terms of the resources that come to Malawi? Because a lot is lost through poor coordination, two organizations working in the same area. And each of them know that the other exists, but they choose not to coordinate for fear of losing funding. This is a real problem and it's impacting aid effectiveness as per the Paris Declaration. But it's something we don't talk about. And it's something that NGOs need to be held accountable for. If I had more time, I would actually share numbers in terms of what the waste is just from the water sector specifically, but another time for that conversation. But I feel it is, I hope this video challenges organizations to be open, transparent and more accountable, particularly for the rural poor that they claim to be helping. So I think that's what I can say to that. So I just got tired of all the talking and I just thought I should do something that could actually inspire my fellow NGO workers to actually do better for the people we claim to serve. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thanks so much, Muti. And yeah, I mean, certainly my my personal view of the view of Scotland-Liepenship, I think you're 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 spot on. And I think your challenge is is well timed and 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 well made. And and very much this is what we're what we're trying to to do. And I think I can see Dr. Montali still on on the call. And I know you're very busy. So please don't be embarrassed about going to your to your next meeting. But if you are here, I'd love I'd love to hear your views on the video, any any impressions that you have. And then just really throwing it open. This is a very informal space. Stay as long as you want to. This is the wee the wee chat rather than a formal meeting. Dr. Montali, I mean, what's your sense of the video? Do you think it's a fair reflection? Or do you disagree with the sort of picture it paints?
Very fantastic animation. And I want to thank Muti for sharing this. Just spot on on what's happening on the ground now. Just a warning then, Muti and team, that you are trying to tell us to bite. So when we were coming biting, as government, it will actually say it was Muti who told us. Because he revealed it that there's need for us to bring sanity in here. But I think he's pretty spot on. And I think this is what we need to work around. And that's why the whole idea of the pillar and enabler coordination groups are really centering around making sure that these things work. One of the things actually under in the pillar and enabler coordination groups, two things that we've learned from the previous coordination is that there should be a financing mechanism. In the past, you know, each donor, depending on which sector they belong in, they would facilitate networks or coordination in that particular sector alone. But we forget that we're working a system. So if part of the system is not working, no matter how much money pumped in a particular area, you may not, you know, harness as much impact. So we are saying as a commission that we need to facilitate that all these system units should be working. And therefore, having that resource from government and as as Muti in the 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 video has rightly pointed out, that the donor community, the donor partner community should also facilitate coordination, even putting aside resources to to support that mechanism. So that's the first part, the financing bit. Second is what we are trying to do now is unlike in the past, where the coordination groups would just end in the office of the President and Cabinet, Chief Secretary. We are now pushing this to have a national coordination committee headed by the head of state himself and deputized by the minister responsible for economic planning. The idea is that there should be accountability in all these pillar and enabler segments to be able to say this is working, this is not working, and this is why, and these are the solutions that we're recommending moving forward. So interest at that high level is going to bring some of the sanity that Muti's video is is bringing on board. So thanks so much, Muti, for sharing this. I presume some of us can even share it widely to the various segments, including the cabinet. So they can see what is messing us up in some of these areas. Thanks once again.
Absolutely. And I think it's a good call for all of us to share the video if you agree with it. I think I saw Salim giving a giving a an indication he wants to speak. Salim, over to you. Sorry, you're on mute.
Go. So thank you very much. Thank you very much for the invite, David. A really incredible initiative as well, 2063. Amazing video. I mean, I've seen this happening not only in Malawi, but many, many other countries that we work and operate in. So it's an international aid and development organization. We're a member of the Scotland-Malawi Partnership as well. And we've got our base in the UK and we work in over 30 countries. And I absolutely, you know, see where you're coming from. You know, I went to a particular village in one of the countries and including Malawi. And I saw heartbreakingly that on, it was a school. And on the front of the school, the donors, they had their whatever, I don't know, something. And they had the actual pump with the name and everything on it and da, 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 da. And, you know, we were supporting this. And another donor who were back from that particular and they moved on and doing really well abroad. They wanted to fund the same thing. And so you just walked about around the block, literally, you know, about 20, 30, 20 yards or so. And similar pump was there in memory of the other family. And you're just thinking of the water table and and all that. And you're thinking, oh, my word. I mean, where is all that coordination gone? And not only that, the school was getting double funding to the max. So one family is supporting, thinking they've got the whole school under there, you know, whatever. And the other family was thinking the same thing. Now, the thing was, both families were not aware that they're working with the same charity, same NGO. And they were led to believe this is just exclusively supported by your family. And the same was given to the other family as well, until they met in a business conference in Dubai. So I see what you've actually done. I mean, you know, it's a tremendous video. But I think when I was initially watching it, I was really, you know, my heart was in shatters. I said, I hope you're not painting everybody with the same brush. Because Islamic Relief Malawi Office, we actually started working in Malawi since 2006, in the time of Bakili Mulusi, when there was a famine and and all that happened. And they asked for international help. And Islamic Relief Worldwide Offices, they had a lot of donor base who are actually back, you know, they were born in Malawi and then they're doing really well. You know, in Canada and America, in in the UK and Australia and other parts of the world. And they got in touch to say, we need to do something. So we just said, okay, we're not operational in Malawi. We're going to talk to the the department who was dealing with it at the time. And they allocated us the southern region where the whole scenario was. The the whole epic center was of the, you know, the drought and the famine. And it was horrific. So since 2006, I am Malawi has been working there in the southern region, in Machanga and Chirazulu, that area there. And I welcome, you know, Scotland-Malawi Partnership and anybody to come and see our project, especially the Honorable Gentleman, Dr. Montali and his team with the vision of 2063. And you can come and see our vision and the mission and the aims and objectives of our development work. We've just recently completed three full villages with 150 built strong homes after the floods that affected a few years ago. You know, it's it's there. It's called Jambo Village in Chirazulu. There is three village sites there. And these are Dr. Montali, I welcome you to please come and see those projects.
That's a very kind of
Yeah.
Always inspiring to hear about Islamic Relief's work. So thank you very, very much. I'm keen to listen to a range of different voices. I'm not sure if you mean me saying Salim, or if you wanted to jump in. But if you wanted to jump in, please do any anything you wanted to share, Stella. Otherwise, if not, just really throw it open to 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 anyone. Any reflections on the video or any reflections on what we've heard from Dr. Montali? Stella, you've got your video on.
Thank you so much. It's really heartbreaking to 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 see what is happening on the ground that people choose not to coordinate because those are deliberate efforts. But sometimes people do it because they're looking at personal benefits or they are just too greedy. But in in this in this era where we don't have resources, we need to share. So Muti, congratulations for the video. I will share it as much as possible to ensure that we coordinate. That's my comment. And also, Mr. Rogat, we'll make a plan to come and see what is happening in Chirazulu or in other places where you are delivering your your projects.
In most part.
Yeah. I've seen a number of especially adverts for for your organizations, which is a reflection that you're doing a lot on the ground. So well done. Let's keep in touch and see where we can find a balance and coordinate with us. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Informal space, if anyone wants to jump in reflections from the video or from the meeting or anything that you want to do as a result of the video or the meeting, just jump in. Does anyone disagree with what was there in the meeting or 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 what were in the meeting or in the video?
Well, I can come in. My name is Tuonge. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, Tuonge.
So my name is Tuonge, working with Water Aid. I fully agree with the message that is in the video. And also just to say that a lot of the times, much of it centers on, you know, the need for attribution. You know, organizations trying to to be seen, to be the ones, you know, implementing and 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 also being visible. And I think we need to get to a level where development has to evolve beyond, you know, the personal organizational self gratification and visibility and competitions that, you know, comes with the fact that if you're more visible. Sorry for that, that if you're more visible, then you attract more funding, you know. So I think also, development agencies also have a part to play. Because usually if they go on the ground and 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 they just based on what they see and who is more visible, then people begin to see to say, if we are more visible, if people see that we're the ones doing the work, see, we are attracting more funding. So I think we need to deal to deal with with such competitions, with such expectations. And also, I think as development agencies, we really need to map beyond what we actually see on the ground. Because for organizations that sometimes are much on the hardware stuff, you know, their visibility is is more seen, unlike those that are doing, you know, software and they're just focusing on coordination. So it doesn't look quite attractive. So I think we, as development agencies, we we, there is also that role to ensure that funding is is also given to those that are actually contributing to development, but they are not visible in the sense or in the loose definition of of visibility. Yeah.
Tuonge, I think, great, great point. You can tell it was a good point because I think your your son or daughter was applauding you while you were making it. But no, in all seriousness, I think two of the most dangerous things in international development are egos and logos. And it's a very much a human thing. It's it's a sense. And in some ways, it makes sense, exactly as you said. You know, the more that you that you make it just about your organization, the bigger the visibility, the greater the voice that you have, the more likely you are to get get funding. And and I suppose as a network, I see a key part of our job is is challenging that mindset to be able to see a collective effort, a collective vision, and to encourage collaboration as a result. And I suppose that's maybe a question for you. What more can we do? I mean, I think Muti made a very fair point. You know, sometimes for a symposia, you know, conferences, forums, this, that and the other, you know, it can just be talking. What can we do as your networks to to make sure that this isn't just a talking shop? What more practical What more practical things can we do to make sure we as networks aren't part of that problem? Any thoughts on that question or other inputs you'd like to make?
I think it is, it is very important like for coordination and organizations, you know, the tremendous and incredible work that Scotland Malawi Partnership and Malawi Scotland Partnership actually brings to the table for organizations. And I think, you know, at the end of the day, you need to get the awareness about the plight of our people in Malawi and to get the funding because, you know, you require funds. And in order to get that funding, it has to be transparent. It has to be, you know, humanitarian crowns and Nogba logos and then things like that. And it's really, really important. So for example, like, you know, we've currently really stuck. We've got 3.5 million sterling worth of aid, which is actually just on the hinges for development projects in Chikwawa. These are the ongoing projects and across Blantaya. And these are actually hinging on the special expertise that we require for the person who actually has the expertise from our organization from Sudan and another country. And their work permits have still not been issued since January. And then the funding is there, the money is there, the donors are there. But it's the expertise that we cannot actually find in Malawi. So we having to sort of get this from our partner offices in Sudan. And one of them was from Indonesia. So now this has been like about seven, eight months and we just not seem to be getting anywhere. So yes, there is all these issues. And I think organizations such as Scotland Malawi Partnership and hopefully Dr. Montali and the people from the government, they actually see the transparent work and where the, you know, you know, they followed all the protocol that's required from filling out the forms, making the payments and everything. But here we are, you know, we're actually in May and this has been going on since early December and we've still not been able to get this resolved. So it's that bit of, you know, thing that we need to see why and where. I mean, I know, I know of cases where, you know, people have got fraudulent work permits and stuff like that. And yes, we need to look at all these things as well to ensure that our countries are not sort of, you know, exploited in the wrong way. But when there is humanitarian work...
I'm just going to jump into that. No, I hear you loud and clear, Salim, and I can hear the frustration in your voice and understandably, understandably. So I just see Dr. Montali signing off there. Thank you very much for your time. Very kind of you to stay for this informal chat, but please do go ahead to your next meeting. Maybe just to find a couple of points for anyone that hasn't spoken yet. Walura, I don't know if you want to voice your point there about district councils? I think really important point if you're there, Walura Harawa.
Yes, I'm around. I wanted to say that I, in the first place, liked the video and thumbs up to the guy who worked on it, Muti. I wanted to say that I think this time around, things have changed because our projects are accepted at a district council level. And at a council level, people there are able to redirect and say, okay, this community already has this organization that is embarking on similar developmental activities. Why don't you consider community X? And as an organization, you basically are able to oblige and then you implement in that area. So I wanted to say that I think things are changing. But then there are also organizations that are quite big who will just speak to maybe directors that capital him of Malawi. And then they will just go to communities and start implementation of the said developmental activities. But otherwise, things are changing now. That's what I wanted to say. Over.
It's a really good, really good point. And I think from that, there's a real role for, you know, the Scotland Malawi Partnership as a network to be making sure our members know about the district councils, that they know about the due process and that they're going through them. Sometimes it can be so easy from 5,000 miles away to think, come on, I've got the money, I just want to do it. And everything else is of bureaucracy. But how important those structures are? Something like 30,000 different NGOs, CBOs, FBOs working in Malawi. And how important it is that local ownership and that local coordination is running the show rather than sort of well-meaning people sitting around tables in Edinburgh or Glasgow or Aberdeen or Dundee or wherever else saying this is what we should be doing in Malawi. So no, a great point and I definitely take an action from me personally from that. I wonder, any final points? Again, we'll close up in a couple of minutes. Any final points, particularly anyone that hasn't spoken yet on the video? Any thoughts that it's triggered for you? Any actions? Did you disagree with anything? And I think that you particularly take away from what we've heard from Dr. Montali? Any final thoughts from anyone that hasn't spoken yet? Great, good stuff. Well, I can hear deafening silence. So let's use that moment to close things. I just want to say thanks so much, everyone, for joining. It's been a brilliant, brilliant discussion. I can see Salim and Stella getting in contact there on the chat box, which is what these meetings are all about. Really impressed with what we've heard from Malawi today. This, as in so many areas, is definitely an area that we will be learning from Malawi. I'll mention it to the Minister for Scotland, the Parliamentary Undersecretary of State for Scotland when we meet tomorrow and encourage him to maybe follow Malawi's leader setting out a long-term ambition. Thanks so much for joining the informal chat for these strange times where we can't yet meet in person. It's so lovely to have the informal chat. So thanks for it. Have a lovely, lovely afternoon. And thanks very much, everyone. Bye for now.